I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you say something before we sit?
Sure.
Oh, let's take a moment of silence to just even our thoughts. Everything that's been happening in the city, I mean, I live here and a lot of you in this room live in Youngstown. It's not good, but the other night when you reach a nine-year-old, this gotta stop. I mean, and I don't know how that happens unless we all get together and right now just keep, keep these families, all the families, in your prayers. I mean, with God's will, the city will, you know, help us get through this and partnerships from all different agencies right now.
Moment of silence.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And Mike Adams, thank you for getting us through this. Mike's an expert on, on these issues and we're lucky we have them. Okay, we want to welcome everybody here. Uh, this is the Mahoney County Commissioners Board Meeting. It is number thirty-three. It is Thursday, already August nineteenth, month's almost over at ten fifteen AM in the morning. Officially call this meeting order. And we'll begin with, uh, public comments, your name and address for the record. And, uh, before that, I want to defer to my good friend, Mr. Repoby. Michael, good to see you.
Good to see you.
I understand that, uh, you have some news for us about this booster.
Yeah, I got a bad hair day and it's probably because of the booster, but I just wanted to thank the CDC for authorizing it. Uh, I walked into my pharmacy where I had my first two Pfizer shots. And I said, I'm here for my booster. And the pharmacist says, it's been twenty-eight days since your last boost, since your last shot. I said, it's been six months. Okay, they filled out a new card for me, got your shot, left after about a minute and that was it, no reaction. But, uh, they're available now. Walgreens and CVS both have them available now. So I told everybody, I'm telling them, beat the rush, don't wait till September. They're there in the drugstores right now.
Wow, cuz I watched on the news yesterday and they said that you have to wait eight months after your second shot to get the booster.
I'm having surgery in September and I said, so they're really, as long as you're twenty-eight days after the second shot, it's time to get the booster if you want it. So I went and got mine.
Wow, okay.
How did you feel?
I walked right out. I still, like you said, just a bad hair day going, that's all.
And you got, uh, you got, what, what was the make of the?
Pfizer.
Pfizer, and you got Pfizer the first time?
I got Pfizer by both two shots and she filled out at the pharmacy, filled out a brand-new card, listed all three shots on it, so I'm good to go.
So they put the two that you previously had, adding the third into one card?
Yep, they had it in their system. They put it on a brand-new card for me. I went to Laminase, so I'm good to go.
I wonder if that, would that be com- uh, compatible with Moderna?
No.
It's not.
I know on the news, they said whatever shot you got the first time, you should take it.
Cuz I had both Moderna and they said I had to wait eight months and I had my second shot on Good Friday. So that was April, so I can't get a booster till December.
Well, I was surprised that I was said, nobody asked me how long it's been or why are you here. They just, there's nobody getting the shots. The medicine's sitting out, pharmacist, nobody's walking in to get them, so.
Well, if they got, if they received the Pfizer and that's compatible, then, you know, it's good that they know that now. I mean, I, this is the first time I'm saying that.
Well, thank you, Mike. We wish you best on your upcoming procedure. Okay, anyone else? Karen?
Well, on a happier note, uh, don't forget the Italian Fest at Briar Hill this weekend. Louisville is having a Heritage Day on Saturday from five PM to eight PM. And they're making a movie down in Louisville. So if you want to be a zombie, they need zon- anyone's welcome. They're doing a military action by the river. And this, this movie is being, after it's done and filmed, uh, it's gonna be distributed on Amazon. So it's, it's, um, it's pretty, you know, it's pretty up and up and, um, and, uh, like Carol said, but the, I think I taught the little girl that was shot. You know, I really, cuz the name sounds familiar. She went to Taft. I had her in preschool in first and second grade.
This is sad.
It is.
It's very sad.
It was a drug house, what I was told. Jerry couldn't, you know, give out more information. And what I didn't like about that news conference, when Jerry and the other reporters were asking other questions, they were shut down. You know, they said, oh, no, we just want to talk about the little girl. Well, there was other incidents that, you know, preceded that girl's shooting. So everything should have been asked without, you know, or, you know, been asked and been, been answered.
Truck wars.
Yeah.
They gotta stop.
Yeah.
What's the drugs?
If they're having a zombie, uh, movie in Louisville, Janetti's whole family's from Louisville, right? If just his family shows up, they'd have way more extras than they need, right? He's, he's got like a thousand people in his family in Louisville.
I'll make sure I tell my mom you said that cuz that's what she's.
She doesn't live in Louisville.
But it's her family.
Thank you, Karen. You know, speaking of zombie movies, if you remember back in the day, the first one, George Romero, actually lots of that movie was filmed in the Hillsville, Alquippa area down along that river. So I don't know who this producer is.
That it should be.
Yeah.
Right in that area.
And then secondly, about that, the little girl that got killed, I mean, th- this is something that's, it's, it's rash throughout, you know, the community. Um, and I appreciate seeing people speaking up about this, the clergy getting together. And something needs, needs to happen. This, every night there seems to be trouble. So we have to pray for our police and, uh, pray that they can get a grip on this as quickly as possible. And it's all over drugs. There, there's no question about it. That's the majority of the problem. So appreciate you, Carol, bringing that up. For a moment of silence for all those that died recently. Okay, anyone else? No, not yet. Okay. All righty, well, with that being said, I need a motion to approve previous minutes of board meeting number thirty-two and approval of bills for payment.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Yes, journal entry?
Journal entry number, uh, motion to approve journal entry number one.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Yes, under agreements, we have letters A through L and we'll begin with, uh, letter A. Audrey.
Commissioners, this is a approval of the, the fifth year of a renewal lease agreement with Alta Behavioral Health Care for leasing of office space at a Cal Renaissance building. And this is effective August first, twenty twenty-one, and this is for their Head Start program.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, EMA? Anna?
Commissioners, this is an agreement with B and J Electric of Poland and Forsheimer Maintenance and the amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars non-general.
Thank you, Anna. Engineers, Mr. Janetti?
Morning, everybody. Uh, letter C is an agreement with Valley Industrial for a fork-mounted boom. This is designed to pick up and transport loads. Uh, the estimated amount is seven thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars and it is non-general funds.
Hey, thank you. And lead, Phil Purrier?
Morning, Commissioners. Uh, D is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction for lead hazard control and healthy homes. Work, uh, to be done by thirty-one Fourth Street, amount of seven thousand one hundred fifty dollars. And E is a, an agreement with International Asbestos Testing Laboratories, IATL. Uh, they do some testing of our sample, samples when our lab, uh, Mahoney County Public Health Lab is closed, uh, in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars non-general.
Thank you, Phil. And recycling, Lou Vega? Oh, Jim Jarrett. Oh, I'm sorry.
Morning, Commissioners and all. Um, item F is two of our many agreements with the townships for subsidy in hosting our recycling drop-off sites. Us Town Township at the amount of eighteen thousand dollars and Green Township at the amount of three thousand dollars. And item G is with Republic Services for the, um, drop-off container that we staged the engineer's office to pick up tires throughout the county and utilized by our Sheriff's Day reporting program. And that is in the amount, an estimated amount of twelve thousand dollars.
Thank you, Jim. Sanitary, Pat Janetti?
Commissioners, letter H is an agreement with Utility Contracting. This was for an emergency repair. Uh, there was a broken lateral on the main line of one of our sanitary sewers located at five twenty-five Coatesville Road. Uh, the estimated amount is sixteen thousand six hundred eighty dollars. This is a very deep sewer and it's in the pavement. Um, non-general funds. And letter I is an agreement with LNS Excavating. Uh, this for sanitary sewer pipe installation at forty-two twenty East Middletown Road in the amount of four thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, both H and I are non-general funds.
Okay, thank you, Pat. And Sheriff?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Hi, uh, Jay. Uh, this is an agreement with Auto Clear to repair the X-ray machine at the front entrance of the courthouse. Estimated amount, seven thousand one hundred and forty dollars non-general. Letter K, it's an agreement with Claybin Ford, uh, Warren, to repair one of our cruisers, uh, with the water pump. Went bad, one thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars non-general. And letter L is an agreement with Colio for their Silver Package Pro. This is used by, um, the detectives and for investigations. And that is in the amount of three thousand four hundred and ten dollars, also non-general.
Thank you, Adam. Motion to approve agreements A through L?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapi Canty?
Yes, change orders A and B. Lead, Phil?
A is a change order with American Pinnacle Construction for some, uh, additional items at nineteen sixty Stewart in the amount of five hundred and seventy-five dollars non-general.
Thank you, sir. O and B Grants?
Commissioners, this is a change order number one and final with Faust Construction for improvements on Virginia Avenue for sidewalk improvements, phase two, in the amount of five thou- an increase in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. That's part of our CDBG program.
Thank you, Anna. Motion?
Motion approved number three, change orders A and B.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapi Canty?
Yes, motion to approve resolutions?
Motion to approve resolutions number one additions?
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on, we have resolutions A through F. And Audrey, letter A?
Uh, I'm gonna let Anna do this and she did a lot of the work on it.
Okay, Anna?
Okay. Thanks. Uh, Commissioners, this is a resolution to approve the agreements and expenditures with the following agencies to assist with COVID-nineteen public health and funded by the CARES Act in the following amounts, uh, Meridian Healthcare, seventy thousand dollars and Camel Community Events, five thousand dollars. Um, Mr. Mal Turner or, um, maybe, um, Dwayne would like to say some words about the Meridian care?
Thank you, Anna.
I appreciate it. Wanted to, uh, wanted to be here today to show our appreciation for all the work that, uh, Commissioners have done and, and, and Anna's team. Uh, also want to thank Dwayne Pitcherelli and, and the Mental Health and Recovery Board for their support. This facility we're talking about is, that most of you quite remember it as the old Assumption Village Nursing Home. Uh, on the south side behind, uh, Goodwill. I'm sorry, not Goodwill, but Salvation Army. And I don't know if a lot of people realize, uh, what's been happening at, at that location over the years that, that Meridian has controlled it. But we now have, uh, fifty-six rooms for permanent housing for people who are formerly homeless, people suffering with the addiction and mental health issues. Ten beds that are set aside specifically for veterans who are homeless. Um, sixteen beds for people who could need twenty-four-hour detox. Uh, sixteen beds for men, um, going through, um, inpatient treatment, sixteen beds for women going through inpatient treatment. We have a primary care practice. It's the only primary care practice in that neighborhood. Uh, we also work with Mercy Hospital and they have a women's centering program there, so for pregnant women struggling with some of these issues. Um, we also are doing our best to try to invest in that neighborhood. We've, uh, we've purchased over fifteen properties on that block from the Mahoney County Land Bank in order to help keep that area safe and protect people who live in that neighborhood. And I want to say that during COVID, you know, this is a facility with that many people in there, day-to-days, people struggling, people at high risk. Our staff were there every day through COVID, not, you know, no one was able to work from home. We were there every day because those are the people that we serve and we're really proud to do it. And we really want to appreciate everything that you all have done for us cuz it gives me a chance to come up here and, uh, talk a little bit about what we do. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Larry. Dwayne?
No, I just want to say thank you and, and, um, both, especially the clients he works with and it's just wonderful. And Audrey and, and Anna's been really great with our clients and, I mean, these are, these are these people's homes. It's gonna upgrade it, so I, I just can't imagine. I know, I'm also looking at air conditioning, so that'll, that'll be wonderful, that happens.
Good. Thank you, Dwayne and Larry. And Larry, I tell you what, bed space for people with addiction, that's something that's been very, very dear to me. I know we don't have enough, but this adding to it is always enough. So we want to thank you for doing that because it's really needed in, in our community with, with the drug problem.
Thank you. I'm gonna add one more thing to that. I think, and I'm sure Dwayne would, would, uh, talk a lot about this, but the increased need for support for people who struggle with mental illness is going through the roof right now. And we need to be able to provide better support for those folks. And I think, uh, COVID is only, I think, brought that more out and, and some of the stress and the trauma that people are dealing with has just made their mental health issues, uh, more difficult and more challenging. So we keep working with that population also.
Sadly, things we take with him.
Yeah. Yeah. Congratulations for doing this because it's needed.
Thank you.
Yes, both of you, Dwayne and, and Larry. Okay, letter B, um, I will read this. Uh, resolution to accept the resignation of Dennis O'Hara, EMA Director, and to appoint Anna Deasentis as the Interim Director of Emergency Management and Communications Agency effective August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. And Anna, it's a privilege to do this and an honor. Um, you have worked very hard and certainly understand things as the Deputy Director of EMA, and I'd like to turn it over to you.
Well, Commissioners, I'd like to thank you, um, for appointing me to this interim position. Um, the confidence that you show in me, um, really I try to live up to every day. And, um, hopefully, um, you find a full-time director soon. Thank you so much, really.
If we identified all the positions that you currently have, you know, that it would take us the rest of the meeting, so.
That's true.
Thank you very much.
All righty. And then letter C, um, well, Anna, would you care to do that?
Sure.
Since you're the director now?
Sure, I'll do, um, C and D. Um, EMA O and B Grants, uh, resolution to approve the appointment of the following individuals to serve on the local emergency planning committee for two years. Um, this deals with the hazardous materials that are in our community and should there be any emergencies revolving around, around that. So we plan specifically, there's a whole list of, um, all the agency or companies have to register their level of hazardous materials. So that's what the LAPC does in Mahoney County. Letter D is a resolution to accept the emergency planning grant award from Ohio Emergency Management Agency in the amount of, the grant will be in the amount of, hopefully, in the amount of four hundred and four thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars for a total budget, for a grant award in the amount of eight hundred and eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. If you notice, this is much higher than our normal allocation. It's usually eighty thousand dollars for a hundred and sixty thousand dollar a year program. This year, the Ohio EMA received American Recovery Plan money through the state agencies. So this was like a one-time application to fulfill, um, some of the, um, equipment needs in emergency.
Thank you, Anna. Very, very much. Okay, sanitary. Pat Janetti?
Commissioners, letter E is a resolution to enter into agreement with SET Incorporated. Uh, this is for emergency repairs to the sanitary sewer structures on South Avenue. Uh, this is per the Ohio Revised Code, section three oh seven point eight six, uh, A one-two, uh, in the estimated amount of forty-nine thousand twenty dollars. And these are non-general funds.
Thank you, Pat. And Sheriff, Adam?
Letter F, uh, this is a resolution approving the grant application to the Ohio Attorney General's Office for the twenty-one twenty-two Drug Use Prevention Grant Program, formerly known as DARE, in the amount of nineteen thousand eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. And there's a fifty percent cat, uh, cash match requirement by Jackson Milton Local Schools.
Very good. Thank you, Adam. Motion?
Motion approved number two, resolutions A through F.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapi Canty?
Yes. And for the good of the order, any elected officials or department heads care to comment at this time? Kurt?
Hi, Commissioners, how are you this morning?
You're sitting there silent. What's going on?
Well, I thought I'd watch today and, uh, uh, let you know that I've been working on, uh, if you have just a couple of minutes, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. Um, been working on, uh, the opioid settlement with, uh, political subdivisions within my region. And of course, Mahoney County is one of them. And, uh, uh, I can say that everybody has signed on and the prosecutor's office has done some, done work, great work to, uh, get the resolutions to sign on to the settlement. Of course, this is just the settlement agreement. Acknowledgement, it's not, uh, the, the settlement actually hasn't been completed yet. And, uh, we're collecting other, uh, other, uh, resolutions and, uh, sign-ons from other political subdivisions throughout the state. Looking forward to, uh, getting a resolution of, uh, ninety-five percent of the political subdivisions in Ohio signing on so that, uh, we can get an agreement for the settlement. Also, uh, let you know that, uh, you know, notified all your law enforcement that, uh, the, uh, Attorney General's program for, uh, vest re- uh, body armor vest, uh, reimbursement has, uh, been renewed. And, uh, the departments are allowed up to twenty, or up to forty thousand dollars. That would be seventy-five percent reimbursement, twenty-five percent, uh, from the political subdivision of the department paying for the balance. Uh, that's pretty much what I have to go, have to say. I'm actually back on the road, so I look forward to, uh, being able to stop by and, uh, to see all of you. You all look great. Looks like, uh, uh, everybody's kind of weathered the last year and a half pretty well. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Good seeing you as well and thank you for the info. Stop by anytime.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No?
I just, uh, you know, congratulate Dennis, you know, and thank him, uh, O'Hara for, you know, his, I think he's been with the county about fifteen years. He's, um, a long time. He's, uh, been a dedicated employee and, you know, in charge of EMA and, and, uh, he's done a great job on our behalf, worked very hard. Uh, he has an opportunity in Florida, you know, Sarasota, Florida, so God bless him. He's, uh, you know, taking his family there and, and, uh, moving to some better weather. And, uh, I don't think I'd want to be there in August, but I think I'd like to be there in November, December. Um, you know, I, I wish him the best of luck and, you know, uh, thank Anna for, you know, filling in and assuming responsibilities until, you know, we can come to a different solution or maybe the same, huh?
You never know.
So, uh, I really want to thank Dennis for his, for his time. Uh, we had an opportunity as a board, uh, yesterday to go out to, uh, several communities, uh, to, uh, present some of the monies that, that we, you know, wasn't our funds, but at the end of last year with our carryover, um, we, we set aside four hundred thousand dollars behind to local communities to assist in projects that don't get funded on a regular basis or don't, where communities don't have the money to fund, you know, they're, uh, they don't, uh, give us the CDBG monies anymore to the tune that we used to. We used to have several million dollars every year divided between incorporated areas, unincorporated areas. Today, uh, it's almost non-existent anymore. So, uh, we've tried to help local communities on projects that, that they, that they don't have the ability to fund. And last night we were in, uh, Springfield Township. Uh, they were able to pave Callow Road and I can't, uh, thank Bob and Brad and Don enough. Uh, they, we went there, we went there in the afternoon and, uh, they did a great job and, you know, letting us know how grateful they were for us assisting them with Callow Road. So, um, you know, they, they have a great community there and, and they did a really nice job. And I laughed because they, they literally had a cake made with our pictures on it, you know, and I, and it was, they went, they went out of their way to, uh, to be, to show their appreciation. So I.
Tell them how big the cake was.
Oh, my God, it was, it was a sheet cake.
It must have weighed twenty pounds.
It was a sheet cake.
Only they would know that.
Yeah. It was a sheet cake and, and, uh, uh, but anyway, they did a nice job. And Campfield City of Campfield as well, we were out with Mayor Duffy, the city council. They were able to utilize fundings for, uh, for trying to help upgrade the, the entry coming into their dispatch center, make it more handicap accessible. So, you know, we really thanked them for their, their kindness and, you know, it's things that we as a board get an opportunity to do when we've, you know, been very prudent and fiscally responsible, and I think we have, and had carryover that doesn't normally happen, uh, to be able to help in this way. And the local communities that are able to take advantage of it are very appreciative and, you know, we thank them for their kindness. And, you know, hopefully we can continue to do things like this to help out across the county, so.
That's all I have. Thank you, David. Carol?
Well, I do echo that. Uh, we have been on the road for the last two months. And like Dave said, it's, it's a pleasure to go out to the community and be able to give some of the funds back to the community that we have uh, through grants. And we want to thank Anna and Audrey for kind of guiding us in that direction uh, with what we've been asked and how we could make that financially possible. Want to thank Larry and Dwayne for great work done through COVID as well as the mental illness, uh, issue that we do have not only in Mahoney County, but it's spread out all over. Um, and you could see that from what's been happening, not only in Youngstown, but across the valley. So we, it, it's very important that we look at that. And I appreciate what you guys do. You really do a hard job. I don't know how I would be able to do that job and, and the environment that we're in right now. Uh, Anna, good luck.
Thank you.
Put that hat on, you got another one.
Thank you.
And, uh, this is the, um, weekend for the Briar Hill Fest. Since I'm from the neighborhood, so, I mean, to me to go back is not, no big deal cuz I'm there every week for church at St. Anthony's. But, uh, it will be a good fest, good food. Uh, go there, be safe. Uh, and I'm gonna say this again, Mike already said that the Pfizer has its booster. But I will say this again, all of you, not only employees of Mahoney County, but residents, if you have not received the vaccination, please get it. It's safe. Get the vaccination. Make yourself safe, your family and your surroundings. Uh, we're seeing a resurgence of this, uh, COVID and the alt- and the alternate to that. And we just, we need to be safe. So watch what you do, wear your mask if you don't feel safe. And, um, don't worry about others. Think about what, when you have it on. Just be safe with that. So have a good weekend. God bless everybody.
Thank you, Carol. And I too want to wish, um, Dennis O'Hara the very best in his new endeavor. Uh, in his new job and his new career. Dennis has served admirably here. It's been a pleasure, uh, to work, um, with Dennis. He's a bright young man, has a great future ahead of him and we're gonna miss him. I want to congratulate Anna, uh, who's been here for many, many years. She's probably done every job uh, within her purview, the Commissioners' Office and throughout the county. She's a plethora of, of information. And, and I wish you all the best and look forward to working with you as the director, whatever time you, so to say. Uh, Italian Fest this weekend, my Mora team, that's the fling-flang-flue, I tie in game. We'll be playing down there on the courts. Uh, we won the championship a year ago. Um, I don't know how it's gonna be this year. Things were kind of scattered because of the COVID, so we look forward to that. And Dave was right, uh, Springfield Township yesterday really spoiled us. They had this huge cake with our picture on it. They had Deruso sausage in a crock pot, BLTs. I mean, peaches from, from Brumgarde Farm, a big bowl.
He would know exactly.
Oh, I'm telling you. Big bowl of peaches from Brumgarde Farm. I tell you what.
They were sweeter than sweet.
They sweetened us up. They, they, they really were.
I mean, the peaches were.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Commissioner, does the Orban treaty?
Commissioner, does the boardman treat you that way?
Boardman, let me tell you. If Larry gets his hands in it, he can make us some great sauce. Let me, let me tell you. Don't forget. And, well, with that being said, we're in Campfield last night and Dave brought up a good point and Carol, you know, through conservative measures, as county commissioners over the past few years with the carryover, we had enough to fund projects otherwise would not have been. Local communities need all the help they can get, whether it's matching funds or funds to take care of projects that have been on their books for I don't know how many years, and it's been a pleasure to do that. Want to thank Anna for all of her hard work and working with that and Audrey that makes this happen. So we're very pleased to do that. I think we're gonna be doing more. So with that being said, Nancy, when's our next meeting?
Next Tuesday regular.
Okay, motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call?
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
I suppose so.
Sarah, how are you, young lady?